Right, I think this is going. Good evening, everyone. My name is Martin Saunders. I am the chairman of Hawley Town Council and Hawley's mayor. And this is the first of, I hope, many live streams that we will run over the coming months. The idea of this is to give an opportunity for me to introduce myself and explain what Hawley Town Council is doing, to also provide some information on what's going on in Hawley, what things would like to make you aware of, and also to give residents an opportunity to ask me any questions. I can't promise that I can give you all of the answers here and now. I may have to take a few things away with me, but I'll certainly do my best to try and answer any questions, or at least signpost you to the right place to go and look. So before I start, I thought it'd be worth doing a little bit of a quick overview of Hawley Town Council and the three councils that you work with. So this is Hawley Town Council, this is our website. There are three councils that operate in the Hawley area. You have Hawley Town Council, which is the smallest of the three councils. We would otherwise be known as a parish council in many other parts of the UK. So we are the smallest, we have the smallest budget, but we are the most local to Hawley, so we only cover the Hawley area. There are eighteen elected members for Hawley, and we have various responsibilities in the town, most notably the Hawley Recreation Ground, Court Lodge, Recreation Ground, we look after the allotments. We have a few different buildings, so we have the café in the Rec. We have the Hawley Edmunds, Edmunds Hall on Albert Road, and we have the Innis Pavilion. So there's a variety of different things that the town council does, but we are the smallest of your three councils. But because we are very local and close to you, we have the best view of what's going on in Hawley. We then have Righet and Banstead. So Righet and Banstead is our borough council in some areas, and Surrey they're called district councils. So Righet and Banstead, much bigger than Hawley, and covers off many different services, including the refuse and waste. So it's Righet and Banstead that will collect your bins once a week. They deal with housing, they deal with many other different services. So they are our borough council. Town Council works very closely with Righet and Banstead on a number of different things. And then we have Surrey, the county council. So much bigger than Righet and Banstead. So obviously Surrey covers the whole of Surrey County. And they look after another set of services, including roads and transport and pavements. They look after education, they look after adult social care. So when you have a look at your council tax, you will see that there is money going to these three different councils. A vast majority of it goes to Surrey for their services. Less goes to Righet and Banstead. And quite a small proportion of your council tax goes to Hawley Town Council. So although Hawley Town Council isn't responsible for most of the services that you have in Hawley and the surrounding area, that doesn't mean that we're not interested in what's going on. Doesn't necessarily mean that we can fix things, but we certainly know people who can fix them. And of the eighteen members that we have in Hawley Town Council, a number of them are what we would call dual-hatted members. So they are members of Hawley Town Council, but they're also members of Righet and Banstead Borough Council. So we have, for example, councillor Hannah Avery, who is an executive member of the borough, and she looks after refuse and a number of other services. We also have, on the county council, we have Jordan Beach, who's a deputy member for highways for Surrey. So although we don't necessarily look after highways in the town council, we are very close with people who are very intimately involved in that. So we can try and get things fixed as well as we can. So I thought it's worth just giving a quick overview of the three different councils. And then me personally, so I'm the chairman of the Hawley Town Council. I don't have any executive powers. I am equal to the other seventeen members in the town council. But I have the role of mayor as well. So I have the opportunity to go out and represent Hawley and get invited to different things around the borough and county sometimes. But my main job is to be chairman of the four council meetings that Hawley Town Council runs. We run those once every six weeks or so, and that's where the main business of the council is run. So everyone in the council ultimately has an equal vote on matters. So just from the purposes of live stream, what I'm going to do is quickly touch on the last four council meeting and just mention a few things that were discussed and agreed at that meeting. I'm going to raise a few things that I just want to let everyone be aware of that are important to Hawley residents. And at the end, we'll have an opportunity to ask some questions. So you will see there's a live chat in YouTube. If you could write your questions in there, please obviously keep them polite and clean so we don't have to do too much editing afterwards. And I'll try and catch up with some questions at the very end. So let's start with the council meeting. So if you go to the Hawley Town Council website, you can see all of the meetings that we have, the agendas for previous meetings and for future meetings, and the minutes for previous meetings. Everything that the council does, as all councils should do, is very transparent. So if you click on the agenda, you can see this is the agenda of the previous four council meeting that we had. And there's a few things in this agenda I'm just going to mention. And I can do that with support of the minutes. So these are the minutes of that meeting. Again, all very transparent and available for anyone who wants to read through them. Now, there's a lot of things in this that I'm going to skip past. You may be interested in them if you want to ask me questions about it now or later on, then please do. But there's a lot of quite dry council kind of matters in here that I'm not going to particularly mention. But the first thing I'm going to touch on is that we awarded a grant at the last council meeting to Hawley United Football Club. So this is a new youth football club that has been set up in Hawley. And they came to the town council via our Hawley Edmunds Fund, which I'm going to talk a bit more about in a second, to ask for help in purchasing some gazebos for the team. So we had an excellent presentation from the club, understood what the gazebos would be used for and how they're very useful, both in the summer for keeping shade and in the winter for keeping dry. And the council members unanimously agreed to provide one thousand one hundred pounds to the club for the buying of gazebos. So that's an example of the kind of thing that we do. And I'll talk a little bit more about the Edmunds Fund in a second. But that was a nice way to start the meeting. We talked about our presence at Surrey Pride, or Pride in Surrey, I think is the proper name. And that happened back on the 2nd of September, sorry, 9th of September. We had a fantastic time as a town council, a set of members that came and represented Hawley and Hawley Town Council there. It was incredibly hot day, but really, really, really good fun. I shall continue past the slightly drier sections and move on to other updates. Excuse me a second while I just quickly go through, pass the council auditors. So we get audited once a year. So all those audits and documentation is all available for anyone who wants to see. We had an update on our Hawley Edmunds Fund, which again I'll talk about a little bit in a second. We agreed on allotment beekeeping policy. So we have some allotment holders that want to keep bees in one of our allotments. So this is a new thing for us. So we needed to create a policy in order to be able to specify how that might go about, what kind of qualifications that we might need to see from somebody who is requesting to keep bees. So we agreed on a policy that the council officers had kindly written beforehand with a few small amendments. We talked about the town plan. So I'm going to quickly talk about some major projects in the town plan that are coming up at the moment, which have been made possible by some funding from the Borough Council called Strategic SIL. So SIL stands for Community Infrastructure Levy. And the idea of SIL is that when you build a set of houses or some other kind of building, the borough can levy on the builders a charge, which then pays for the improvement of infrastructure in the local area. And the town council actually receives a percentage of all the SIL in Hawley. I think it's fifteen percent, someone on the chat will correct me if I'm wrong. And then the borough collects the remaining amount for Hawley and for the rest of the areas, other areas of the borough. And every so often, they go through a bidding process for this thing called Strategic SIL, where large projects and large funds can be bid for. So the town council bid for four projects and was successful on all four, which was fantastic news. So the main projects on the go at the moment are, we are looking to do some renovation work at the town council offices. Town council offices, the Edmunds Hall, are pretty dilapidated. They're a single-skin brick building, so not very energy efficient and quite small, quite cramped. So we were successful in receiving some funding to renovate those offices and to make them energy efficient. As part of that, put solar panels onto the roof and the possibility of maybe car charging points in that building. So that will give that building a new lease of life, it'll be very exciting. We received funding to replace the railings on Hawley Recreation Ground. If you see the railings, they're quite tired. In fact, they're falling apart in a few different areas. So we have funding to replace those. We have funding to sort out the allotment car driveway areas, which are kind of gravel and breaking up. So we're going to look to tarmac those. And then finally, we have funding for replacement of the play equipment at the Michael's Crescent playground near Riverside. Now, that is also a project where we are demolishing the old squash courts at that site. So that started this week and looking like great progress is being made. So once that's done and we've cleared up that area, we're then going to look to use the Strategic SIL funds to refurbish the playground area there. And also potentially, if we can find additional funding, look to see what we can do with the site that used to hold the squash courts. So finally, the railings, there's a kind of wooden fence around that playground. That's also being replaced as well because that's starting to get quite tired. So lots of good projects going on in the town plan. If you'd like to see the town plan, it is linked from the Hawley Town Council website. I think it is. Sorry, I should have got this linked up already. It's in here somewhere. I'll stick it in the show notes at the end. So that was the town plan. And strategic infrastructure projects, as I was just mentioning before. We talked briefly about our environmental activities. So we have an environment working group that was responsible for planting wildflowers. So councillor Avery, Hannah Avery, is the chair of that group this year. So we're looking at projects that we can do in the town for the coming winter and spring. We have a bit of a vision for Hawley and that would love to see more wildflowers around the town. It would be wonderful if you could drive into Hawley and when you kind of go over the border from other towns into Hawley, you're greeted with a wonderful array of wildflowers. Slightly tricky thing to do because we don't own the land that the flowers will need to be kept on. But I think we've all agreed that that is something that we'd like to see happen. So that's the kind of thing that the town council is looking at from an environment point of view. We've been involved in tree planting, we've been involved in many other kind of environmental activities related to that. We have a communications working group, which is all around the communications of the town council. So councillor Easterbrook was elected as chairman of that group. And we're looking at ways that we can continue to get the town council out into Hawley and have our residents see what we're doing and challenge us and talk to us. And this was one of the actions that came out of that. Improvement of the town council website and other activities. We talked about having an online forum, funnily enough, that's what this is. We're also looking at other ways that we can interact with residents by getting out into the town centre and having a stand, maybe outside one of the supermarkets, and also having a more regular resident forum as well. So this isn't the only way, we're not going to just do it online because we know that online communications is great for a certain group of the community. It might not necessarily work for other people that maybe aren't so comfortable working on the internet. So doing things in face, in person, is also pretty important. So yeah, so we're looking at different ways that we can work with the residents and understand what you want to do. We talked about the Christmas hospitality. So we have counselling, councillor hospitality, once a year. And it's going to be on the 9th of December. So we're really looking forward to seeing that come into the town centre and come and see us. All of the councillors put a little bit of money in to pay for some food and some drink. So we'd love to see you there. That would be very exciting. And we gave a town award, which we, well, we agreed, we voted on a town award, which we are giving out this evening. I'm not sure I'm quite enough to say who it is yet. So that was the last set of meetings for council. As you will see from the meeting list, we also have a planning committee. Now, Hawley Town Council isn't a statutory planning authority, so we don't have a final decision on planning matters. But because we're a town council, we have a strong say. So we have a planning committee led by councillor Mike George, who leads us through the current planning applications. And we give our comments back on that and they go back to the borough. And we make sure that those are done in time before the timescales finish. So if that's something that you have a concern about, particularly on planning matters, it would obviously be very welcome to come along and listen in on those meetings. And if you're putting a planning request in, you can even address the committee on that if you so wish. The last committee I'll just quickly mention is the leisure committee. So that's led by councillor Samantha Marshall. And the leisure committee deals with all of our leisure facilities. So that could be the allotments, or it could be the Hawley Recreation Ground, or it could be Court Lodge. Leisure committee is the vast majority of our budget. So Samantha's committee has most of the spending responsibility in the council. And yeah, and we have an important meeting coming up on the 17th of October because we're now into budget planning process. So by around December, we will have agreed a budget for the year. And all of the committees need to feed into that what budget requests that they have. So that's happening right now. And we have to total the numbers up together, see what the requests are, and then see essentially what we can afford. And that then gets decided in the December four council meeting, which has that precept. So that's when we set the council tax for the year coming ahead. So that's what's going on at the Hawley Town Council side of things. There's a few other things I just want to quickly raise up for your knowledge. So there is, you're probably aware that Gatwick is putting in a planning request to use the Northern Runway, which is at the moment a kind of standby runway, an emergency runway, as a proper second runway. So there is an opportunity for residents to provide their input and feedback on that. I'll provide a link on this again in the show notes. So if you're watching this later on, you can go and provide some comments. So the deadline is the 29th of October 2023. So if you want to put a representation into that, then please do. The town council will be doing that as the town council. But obviously, the more people who put their opinions in, the better decisions will get made. So I wanted to draw that to your attention. Next, I wanted to quickly show you is the What's On page on the Hawley Town Council website. So there's a few things going on, so obviously there's live stream right now. We have the Hawley in Bloom Awards Evening tonight, which we're very much looking forward to, and we'll give some awards there. Then we have Hawley Lions Bonfire Night on the 4th of November. And then we're into the Remembrance Events. So we have rededication of the Garden of Remembrance and the parade on the 12th, actually, Sunday the 12th. There we go. 10:15 to 11:25, that's always a very well-attended event. So if you're wondering what's going on in Hawley at the moment, please go and visit the Hawley Town Council website and have a look at the events page. Next thing I just want to quickly raise to your attention was the Hawley Edmunds Fund. So I mentioned this before because we use the Edmunds Fund in order to give some money to Hawley Football Club for their gazebos. So the Hawley Edmunds Fund is a fund that was left by a gentleman called Cyril Edmunds, who in his will left quite a large amount of money to the town council. And the town council decided to invest that with an organisation called Community Foundation for Surrey, who invests that in some ethical funds that then give a return back to the town council that we can then use for giving to local charities or local organisations or individuals specifically in the Hawley area. So we only give money from the Edmunds Fund to specifically Hawley organisations or Hawley individuals. So that can give funds of usually around a thousand pounds to two thousand pounds. And would love to hear from you if you have a project that you need funding. The Edmunds Fund is there to help you, so please do get in touch. We also have a smaller fund, which is a council grant scheme. This is for smaller amounts of money, a few hundred quid kind of amounts. Again, probably easier process, slightly shorter process to go through to get those kind of funds, but again, designed very much for Hawley residents and Hawley organisations. So if you need funding assistance for a few hundred pounds for a project that you're working on, then have a look at this page on the town council website and click on the application form. We don't often get requests for these funds, not enough. So would love to be in the position where we are having to make some difficult decisions about who we give the money to. So please do look into that. And if you know somebody who's running a project, please point them in that direction. Next thing I wanted to quickly raise your attention to is a big planning request. Now, this is a slightly odd one because this isn't strictly in the Hawley area, but this is in Charlwood. So it's the area, in fact, I can show you on a map just here. So this is, so Tesco's is through, where is Tesco's? That's Tesco's here, actually, I think, isn't that that building? Yeah, no, that's the Tesco's building here. So there's the roundabout there, Charlwood over here. So the red outline is a outline of a planning request that's gone in for 446 dwellings, as well as other kind of supporting facilities. Now, although this isn't strictly in the Hawley area, I wanted to raise it for awareness of Hawley residents. And as Hawley residents, like any resident, you have the full right and opportunity to provide comments and feedback on a planning request. I'm not here to tell you to be supportive or to object. But what I probably would raise is that's a significant number of dwellings quite close to Hawley. And so consideration needs to be made of the infrastructure and the facilities that Hawley has, which is very likely to be needed by these dwellings and by these residents. So if I could point residents towards that, and I'd like you to make your own decision about what your opinions are on it. But I think it's important that residents know that this is being, this is an outline, planning request, and is being considered at the moment. The, oh yeah. The last thing I'm going to very briefly plug is my Level Up Laptop Appeal project. So you may or may not know that during the pandemic, I ran a project to get laptops into the hands of disadvantaged children who were sent home from school and didn't have anything to work on. And it's a project that went really well and is still really needed. But unfortunately, my donations have pretty well dried up recently. So if you're interested in helping, if you have a laptop at home that you don't use anymore and is still good and useful and works, then please get in touch with me. And I have a donation point at Hawley Library. So I'd be very, very keen for donations right now. The last set of donations went to I Choose Freedom, which is the new name for Righet and Banstead Women's Action, and also to East Surrey Domestic Abuse Services. So you know, really important, kind of worthy organisations with some people that really, really need help. So very, very happy to help them. But I'm out of laptops, I'm basically out of stock. So if anyone can help with that, that would be fantastic. So that, I think, is coming to the end of the points I wanted to raise for this session. Here's an opportunity to ask some questions. So please put some questions in the chat if you would like to ask any. I did have one prior to coming online. Thanks to Thomas Bunch on Hawley Life, who asked about this recent bit of bad news, a 42-hour discharge that could be sewage released into the River Mole near Hawley. And this all relates to lack of capacity in our local sewage works. So the main sewage works that serve Hawley is we have the sewage works that is near Meath Green, kind of near Westfell Park and Meath Green. And there's also a sewage works more towards Smallfield and Burstow. Both of these sewage works, there are others in the area. There's a big one in Gatwick and there's a few others. But those are the two ones that are kind of in our area. And both of those are having issues with, particularly during storms of releasing raw sewage into the Burstow stream and to the River Mole. This is something that has concerned a number of Hawley Town councillors. And even prior to this, so this happened relatively recently, we've been raising questions with Thames Water, asking about what their plans are for increasing capacity. We've had some responses back, they are fairly lacking in detail. But they do say, as this news report also says, that there is a plan for the Hawley sewage works to have their capacity increased. I think it says 2026. But there's very little detail as to exactly... But there's very little detail as to exactly what that, what that means. So this is something we're very aware of and something that we want to get fixed because nobody wants to have raw sewage going in our local streams and rivers. So thank you very much for, for raising it, Thomas. We're very aware of this and if we keep doing these live streams, I'll keep you up to date if we hear any more news from, from Thames Water. But that's certainly something that we want to try and, want to try and encourage Thames Water in the strongest possible terms to, to improve and sort out. So that was a question that we had beforehand. I'm just going to have a quick look to see if we have any questions on the live stream. No questions at the moment. So we'll just give it a little bit longer and see if anyone wants to, wants to ask any questions. Just go back to the town council website for a moment. If we don't get any questions now, it's not a big problem. There's always opportunity to ask questions later on. This live stream will be saved on, on YouTube so people can watch it later on. And if, if you ask a question there, I'll periodically have a look and check to see if there's any questions that have come up. So give it another ten seconds. Look as though we have any more questions coming in. No? Okie dokes. In that case, I will close it off there. So thank you very much for watching. If you have any feedback on how this went, whether you liked it, whether you didn't like it, whether you think I should change the format, whether I should waffle less, whether I should waffle more, let me know. Very happy to hear from you. My email address is, in fact, if you go and have a look on the councillors' page on the council website here, you can find the details of all of the councillors. My details are there, martin.saulers@hawleysurrey-tc.gov.uk. Drop me a message, I'd love to hear from you. But otherwise, thank you very much. I think I'll close it off there. Have a lovely evening. Take care.